Remove your hats.
Right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the nine states of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roger, you ready?
I'm ready.
First up.
Alright, okay, so I'm back on behalf of PCI. A couple things to bring back to you. Just so you know, the painting is completed on the depot building itself. They did the best they could matching the colors.
Looks good.
Hopefully we don't have too many complaints on that. And also we did some landscaping down there, so if you get a chance, let me check that out. They did up around the sign at the highway and then around the building. We didn't go any farther around the restrooms or anything. It was pretty pricey. Restrooms for the festival. Doug, you responded to Nisa's email, so thanks on that. We're gonna pay someone Saturday and Sunday to clean the restrooms. We did reach out to a town employee or Pam. She declined, which was fine, so we opened it up. And there was an individual that has contacts with PCI and is a member, and she's gonna take care of that. So, can we get a key?
Yeah, we'll get you a key and make sure supplies are in there.
Okay. We assume that there was a closet?
Yeah, there is in the men's bathroom, there's a closet with a padlock. We'll get you all that information and stuff in there.
Why is there a desk in the men's restroom?
Not really sure.
Okay. It was asked, I said, "I have no idea."
I don't know, it's been there for a long time now.
Should we remove it, Doug?
I didn't know if it was a baby changing station.
Well, that's an interesting idea, but gosh.
But I don't know, I mean, it's just kinda.
If it is, maybe we should put a sign, "Baby changing."
But is there one in the female? I didn't go in there.
Is there a pull-down one?
I think there is.
Is there one? This is just an old-school office desk sitting back there in the corner. Probably a stove in the female bathroom.
It's your desk, Roger?
No, it's not mine. It's your restroom. We don't want anything to do with that desk. And we cleaned out that barn last year, so please don't show up in the barn unless you guys just need.
I would say a proper disposal receptacle.
Could you sell it for eighteen?
Nah, you don't.
Oh, it's an empty part.
Really?
Oh, yeah, it's old.
Really? I don't believe you.
Hey, sit outside the park's building.
He's dumping it all.
And the last thing, when are the restrooms locked?
After the festival.
Okay, is there any way we can extend that? Because we still have visitors come to the community. Now, we understand it's probably not heated, so that's pipes reason and all that, understand? Could we, we still have a lot of people come through after the festival.
Well, I mean, if the board's okay, we can extend it, just have to kinda go day by day. As soon as we see where a freeze system or possible freeze or no heat, it's concrete, we'll have to get it. Put in freezing everything until we don't.
We appreciate it. It could stay open a little bit longer.
If they're okay with it, we'll just, like I said, we'll have to play it here by ear.
And then also, we also appreciate the new signs pointing restroom in that direction. But if the restroom's closed for the winter, what are we gonna do with the signs? We don't want people to go down there thinking there's a public restroom and then it'd be locked. It's just a thought that was brought up, so. Can you cover the signs somehow? They're on the utility poles, I don't know, did you guys put them?
Yeah, we put them up. Just take them down. We've got all kinds of time, guys. Doug will personally take them down.
Yeah, let's just point them towards his.
It was just brought up.
We'll figure something out.
We can get clothes signs or something.
Yeah, like magnetic clothes signs or something.
Like I said, if the board's okay with leaving it open for a little longer, we.
Yeah, we understand the whole freezing and everything.
Do we need to make a motion on that?
Then if I see cold weather coming, I feel like it's time.
Yeah, just let her know, hey, we're gonna winterize and we'll shut them down, so that's fine.
That's the big reason, there's no heat.
And I figured that's what it was, but also, we're still warm. We'll work for a week or two.
We can work with you.
We appreciate that. Okay, yep, and if you could get her a key?
Yep. I'll try to take care of this week.
And she's busy, so, we're just up there walking the tents, so. But I think everything else is lined up for the festival. Appreciate the police department, the board, and everybody helping out and putting this event on, so. It takes everybody in there, I'm a little department to get this pulled off, so.
It's a lot of work?
A lot of work, I guess. Yeah, but it's appreciated from our board to all of you guys, so.
Well, thank you.
Yep, thank you guys.
Appreciate it.
First thing I have is our claims on the amount of three hundred forty thousand, one fifty-eight thirty. I did not have a chance to look there if you have questions on anything.
Well, I see we got a substation transfer switch for twenty-four-nine. Did one go out, or we just?
Uh, yeah, it was, it had been, um, we've been having trouble with just sudden power outages for flickering out for seconds and everything, so they got that, and then they got it changed, and it was unlucky it wasn't even working.
Really?
Cracks and everything, so.
We got a phase, one-phase pad mount backup or new hope?
Um, yes.
Okay.
That is, uh, I think one of them mounts, uh, yeah, that's, he says it's saying new hope on it, is that the new hope?
Yeah, that bill just came to me, so one of them is for a backup for them, and then another, there, that's two. That's two of them.
Two?
The other one she was trying to type in, it's a backup for about six different other locations.
Oh, okay.
So it wasn't necessary to list all those locations, but a backup for those facilities.
Okay, well, that's the only thing, it looked out of ordinary, everything else pretty much standard. All usual stuff, I moved to approve.
Second.
Call in favor?
I have minutes for, I must've missed the August twenty-first meeting, so I got those done, and then I've got a September eighth meeting, so just gonna.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
There was just one, I put the, the blue tag is the one that you won't resign, but that's fine. While those are going in around, I've kinda been looking into some of the CDs, investments that the town has got. We still, we have some investments that are gonna be renewing in the February and March, but we've got about six different ones that are gonna renew, and it's not till a year away. That current rate at renewal time when we did this a year ago was just a quarter of a percent, and CD rates are up near over five percent right now. So I would like to look into maybe taking an early withdrawal on those and reinvesting currently, and I'll have to double-check the rates just to make sure they haven't changed, but when I checked on these a week ago, First Financial Bank was offering a nine-month rate at five point five-one, Fountain Trust was offering a nine-month at four point five, and they do have a twelve- and a thirteen-month option that wasn't as great of a percentage, but we'd like to consider possibly looking in the First Financial Bank for a few of those CDs. If you have any interest in, if you'd like to leave those separated or do a combination.
Are these, are these tied to any particular UTEF fund?
The interest checks, I have to look, because there's a breakdown of interest that goes back to particular ones, so we'd still have to make sure that we follow that procedure on state board of accounts, but I don't think it matters if it's a certain CD, um, one versus.
Well, the interest, yeah, you know, I guess like in the bottom six, I think we talked about doing those, right?
Just possibly if, unless you all had any other thoughts, like it's about quarter of a percent versus over five percent right now.
Twenty-six thousand net, yeah.
To tie it up another year.
Twenty-six thousand, two hundred dollars net increase in revenue to the town by doing that.
An idea?
Yeah, it's a very nice idea.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Call in favor?
And I'll, I'll double-check those rates and if there's any other input that you guys have on those. Uh, the only, the last thing I have is, I've been kinda talking about the Jefferson Street property that we've owned, that we acquired from the county for quite some time. Reached out and wanted to get some quotes on demo, reached out to three different people, um, I know one was gonna get me one, um, it might be on my email.
Is there a deadline for that quote?
Not necessarily, I mean, this is just, I wanted to get that conversation started, um, but I do have one back for major enterprises, and then I've also got a letter of interest from an individual that would like to make an offer.
To buy the property?
Yes.
Not demo?
Well, eventually. Well, to purchase it, but per Josh's letter of recommendation that we asked him to provide back in February, it was a demo, demo property only, um, so I think we need to respect his professional opinion on that. I had sent an email to, this was a property that we did get appraisals on, and we did advertise, we did not have any bids, so I think that it's okay to move forward if the board should choose to make.
So do we now have two bids, is that what I'm understanding?
Um, no, I have two.
We have a bid for demo.
I have two a year ago, and we advertised the sale of the property for the average of the two, and I did not receive any.
Oh, okay.
That is an offer, and then, um, just an individual offer, and then I had actually reached out to before.
That's a joint property owner, right?
Um, no, no, before I knew, um, before I had, I had already called a few different people on a demo quote before I received that, so. There's a couple different options, I just wanted to get that conversation started. I wouldn't mind to wait two more weeks.
Yeah, I'd like to see another, see if they get another quote on a demo.
Because I think they were very adamant that they were gonna, um, and I'll, I'll be happy to check my email before the meeting's over, just to make sure, because he was gonna try to get that quote, so, um, that was a quote received. But just conversation, any ideas, um, if you don't mind to give it a couple more weeks, see that those, present all those demo quotes together along with that potential, uh, purchase, so.
Okay.
That's all I have. That's right, you had three places you approached for quotes, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
I remember that.
Okay, just wanna make sure with you that, since we did do the advertisement and the appraisals last year.
So you'll have to make a finding that it's not, um, of substantial value to the public if you're gonna demo it?
Okay, would Josh's letter of recommendation suffice?
They can just adopt that as the finding, yeah, if they want it to.
Okay. That's all.
You had nothing?
I didn't have anything for the public meeting, no.
Okay. Bill?
So we've had twenty-five criminal investigations in September as compared to fifty-nine last year. Hope for the year is two hundred and forty-three, and the close, as the close of September of twenty-twenty-two, there were three hundred and fifty-one. Hundred and eleven of these have been violent, eight in September, five, uh, five hundred sixty calls for service, five traffic crashes, uh, two impounds, seven arrests, eight alarm calls, three being incentive invoices. According to our ECWS, our E-ticket system, forty-two entries in September, zero felonies, three misdemeanors, three infractions, twenty-five ordinance violations, and twenty-eight warnings. Last year, there were four hundred and thirty-seven calls with fifty-nine cases, eleven crashes, seven impounds, seventy-two ECWS entries, ten were felony, eighteen were misdemeanor, twenty-six infraction, ninety-two warnings, and sixteen arrests. Any questions on the stats?
You guys are doing a great job.
Thank you. Brady is also doing very well with the cap.
When's the E-ticket now?
Middle, middle, end of December. PCI contacted me, they want to block off, or not block off, it already blocked off, but they want to enforce, I guess, the police department enforcement, zero parking on High Street, the north side. Traditionally, we've always had like, uh, the Elks and then the Woodcutters, uh, they've always parked on the square, and I didn't know what you guys would like to have done as far as.
So, getting more clarity here, you're talking the north side of this section?
Yes, on the other side of this.
That's where the Elks put the cutter in.
Yeah, the north, the right up against the courthouse.
Well, I thought it's always been no parking.
It's always been no parking, but people have gone in and then just kinda left their car there all day. Elks has like a UTV that used to run for materials.
Well, that's shuttle UTV, or side by side, that's a little different than a vehicle that goes and parks all day.
Well, the UTV sit there all day too.
Was that bad?
I, they're not my way, but I guess a lot of people complain, maybe special treatment or something, uh, and then, of course, the woodcutters got usually a truck or two there with their trailer and.
Well, don't they have the trailer attached to the, attached to the truck, though? I mean, they aren't coming and going in that, are they?
No, it's, it's sat there the whole time.
Well, yeah, if it's sitting there attached, I mean, that, where, that's where they keep their supplies and their precious things, their, you know, their valuable things to, to do their cutting, I think. Gosh, I don't know, I don't wanna open a can of worms here.
I have no interest in it.
No interest.
People go and, go to those shacks on that side and drop off supplies, and sometimes they have a lot of supplies to drop off and unload, and then they just leave.
Yeah. And I'm not excited about it at all.
I'd say as long as they stay order, that's the way it's been, right?
Yes. I mean, we may have some people who've been there, I mean, if they're there for three or four hours, we could ask them to, hey, you know, you've been here all day, you're not, you're allowed to drop stuff off, you're not allowed to, but then we're probably still gonna get the, you know, that trucks parked there, those UTVs are parked there, that kind of thing.
Just kind of open that Pandora's box if you start doing that.
I mean, I'm good with the way it's been, but that's just me, so.
Well, I don't think there's support here, it doesn't sound like.
I emailed you guys the budget, I didn't know if you wanted me to go over that, or you just need to see that, or.
Don't we have a budget meeting set for next Monday?
No.
Or after, right after the festival?
After festival.
After festival, yeah. Yeah, thankfully update.
Okay, that's all I have.
Thanks, Bill.
You're welcome.
Yep, I don't have a whole lot, just a little bit here, I do have one big thing, but UMAC is, uh, we got the conduit in down at the depot for the hard charger down there, we just have to get the concrete and the wire pulled in. I talked to the company that's gonna put it in, they said they can do both of them in a day, very short period of time, but to install them and get them in operation.
Any estimate on timeframe?
Um, they said once they get the paperwork, they can be here pretty quick.
Who, what paperwork is it?
Just, there's, uh, well, I didn't write it all down, but there's like the, uh, construction paper that you handed me, most of that they've already got, but she did send, yeah, I got, she didn't send it to me, but she says you should have another paper that you actually have to fill out to, uh, something about the final.
It's probably the account setup.
Yeah, I think that's what it is. She said we'll need to fill that out. I've got it written down, I'll bring tea tomorrow and everything, but, um, hoping to get, you know, Britain, I can get to, hoping to get that poured and everything, but with the festival starting.
Before festival?
Yeah, well, I doubt if we have them hooked before festival, because they'll be coming down Indianapolis and everything, and we got a little bit of work down here yet to do to get it in and everything, so, but, yeah, they said they could be here pretty quick once we get that done. Of course, we'd be not seeing a parking lot is striped, we'll be putting a mulch in tomorrow, um, and everything, try to get that all wrapped up, ready for the festival, so people are not walking through the mud, get it all cleaned up around there. The guys have been working on some limbs over the sidewalks and stuff, if you've seen down on West High Street there, they've cut a bunch, right, so it's easier for pedestrians to walk through, we're gonna continue doing that. We've gotten High Street, Virginia, and Shadland, and of course, Ohio, we've got a lot of that done on there, so we'll continue on that. And then the cemetery, the, you know, the building's done, the big pile of dirt has been removed from the back lot, if you haven't been out there, it looks real nice, and we've got the new building with dirt in it, both clay and the topsoil, so we can continue doing that. Fence posts have been put up at the park for the pickable cord, so we're coming up with fence and all that. The lift station, the pave, it's been paved out there, we're just waiting on now the fence and everything, and then we're, we'll be contacting, uh, Ron Willow about the sewer connection he's wanting out there, if that works, we can do that, and, uh, the street light that I was notified this morning is up, it'll be on and everything, so, that's about all I got, and you know, the next couple weeks, all's gonna be festival preparation mostly. We will be, I meet, uh, Britain and I meet this Thursday with Mike Adams from MPa to go over some of the poles that Dan and them have talked about, update that, and then, uh, about bringing an engineer on east of town from, uh, past Billy Creek Mall, we installed new poles, live room, and, uh, update and all that, and give a surprise and everything on that, and, um, I do have, uh, if you look, I put in your mailbox, I believe, the thing on A1 Construction for the Strawberry Road building.
Yeah, so there's two, there's two pages here.
Yeah.
One's the addition and one's, uh.
The installation.
Finishing out the addition, I guess.
Yes, foam, and, uh, I can't, uh, just tell you, he's got a guy coming in to do that, he doesn't do it, but he's got a guy coming in to do that. That's the only quote I've got, Randy and I talked about that, I think we're gonna start. Now on any project like this, we have, we're gonna advertise it in the paper a little bit, so, I'm not getting return phone calls, Amish don't return phone calls, so we can get more quotes other than just.
Well, on that, on that building, uh, I think we heard back from Graves as far as, we had a couple different opinions on heat tape on the pods, no heater versus heater, and I think Graves recommended, now who, who, who's going to be? Well, we, we got the quote locally, I guess, for the house to put in one in, did we get that?
I don't think other than what Sean presented, but that wasn't, I mean, Graves is doing the installs.
Yeah, AC Electric is supposed to come back with a price.
Yeah, they did one down, apparently.
Down there, but they've not contacted me on, uh, maybe touch base with him tomorrow.
Yeah, touch base with Clint, I, I, maybe it was just a conversation when he was working on something about a Pizza King, but I swear I saw something right somewhere. You have it?
No.
Kevin, you have it? Well, I don't know, baby.
Well, I'll look.
I don't know.
I'll look and see.
I don't know. But anyway, my point is, we need to get, make sure we, we get that, uh, uh, in our, our project to, uh, make sure we don't freeze anything up. Any word from, from Graves as far as installation? No.
The compactor is not due to be in stock until December.
Okay, so, now, now, do we, we, do we put that in and pay and turn around bill, how's that, I can't remember how we, that's been several months. They agreed to pay for it, the state, DOC.
Yes, we'll probably have to pay that bill, so we'll watch, depending on, probably won't be the end of the year, and most likely, we're gonna be first of the year, so just, 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 I'm sure it's gonna be a reimbursable payment, but, yes, we'll, that grant money will pay back.
Yeah, somebody reach out to Clint and see what, uh.
I'll give him a.
He's aware of it, I saw, I, I, I think I saw something. I'm getting old, hell, I can't understand.
I think you may be right on that, so I'll look through my.
I hope so, I'm on mine, I hope I'm not losing.
And if not, I can, I can go see you tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay.
So do we need to accept, do we need to accept this?
Uh, if you wanna wait on, on AC, it doesn't matter.
Well, this is just, this is just a physical structure.
If you can accept that, then I can tell him it's a go.
It's just a physical structure, the sooner he knows it go, the better, we get the thing ready.
That's fine, if you wanna, if you want, I mean, that's why I brought us.
You guys look to this, anybody?
I have that, let's go see it.
Yeah.
I have it on my desk.
So I wanna make a motion, is that a motion?
I'll move.
Okay, so there's, uh, thirty-seven hundred dollars for materials and labor for the full bar addition, there's eleven thousand five hundred for materials and labor to insulate the existing building and addition on the back of the building.
So we're doing existing plus the new, okay.
Yeah, it all has to be insulated and all that.
You guys wanna look?
Did you make that motion?
I made a motion, I'm hanging here.
I'll second.
There we go.
Call in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
I think we need to make a concerted effort, though, to make sure we get more than one.
Yeah.
Because it's, this happened a couple different projects now, and that's doesn't look so great.
Well, the last project you guys approved, the guy come in, uh, about two weeks ago, it is about six weeks after I told him.
You know, a lot of, they're very, everybody's very busy out there right now, it's hard to get even on large projects.
So that's why we figured we'll advertise it in the paper, and then on Facebook, and then maybe we can attract them.
Or bit.
Yeah, so, the other thing I've got, um, I talked to B and T about this and, um, everything, out here on South Market Project. Okay, where we started and coming north on Market Street, um, sixty feet south of that is a flush hydrant and three check meters that are no longer in use, and, uh, a flush meter or hydrant is bad and needs replaced and everything, so I talked with B and T about extending that eight-inch on out, another sixty feet.
Past the project.
Past the project.
That flush hydrant, three-inch?
Huh? The flush hydrant, uh, I think is a three.
Three or four.
So for a sixty-foot addition, an eight-foot, eight-inch water main, and he'll make the water taps for the, the three taps out there for the houses, he'll eliminate the three check meters that we no longer use, and eliminate a water valve, and the flush hydrant is about the sixty feet is a fire hydrant and three valves, so we don't need this anymore. So while he's here in town, uh, for nine thousand two hundred and ninety-six dollars, he'll add sixty feet of eight-inch water line and do all the taps and eliminate the check meters while he's here.
And we'll pick up three houses?
Well, they're already there, it's just he's gotta make.
Well, it cleans up an old system.
Be a better service.
Uh, I'm in favor.
Yeah.
I hate to leave old stuff right there.
Does it, does it change the scope in relation to the?
This has, this, I understand, has nothing to do with it, I've already talked to Ken Olson.
Okay.
And it won't reflect anything on that, the inspector, I talked to him, it'll be a separate billing, basically, we'll write this check to B and T.
I'll make a motion.
For them to do this.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so, that's all I have, unless you have any questions about anything.
I got a question about the parking lot. On the, the electric chargers, are we set to do, I know we're only doing one, but are we set to do two of them if we needed to do that?
I thought we were doing two.
We're doing one, two, two locations, one in each spot.
But we are, I mean, we've got a pad set for that.
Yeah, it's all right here, it wires up, and it, actually, it's set to charge two cars at the time.
Right.
Yes, it's, we're a go, we're just waiting to get, uh, UMAC put the conduit in for us last week, and last Wednesday, I think it was, it's all there, we just gotta, uh, pull the wire, tie it all in, and then we do have to pour a pad for it to sit, so.
Question I've been asked a couple times, for whatever reason, I don't know why, um, was about the, the charging, um, spaces, what kind of enforcement to keep people from randomly parking in those spaces absent? If he, the charger, I mean, if the parking lot's full, they're gonna park in those spaces and block the charges, whatever.
I would say we'd call like, just like a handicap, I mean, if we catch them, then we can take them, but.
Well, you know, if you need an ordinance for that kind of thing, or?
Yeah.
Okay, let's create an ordinance.
I was already in ordinance on the parking lot, I'm trying to just get a minute.
We're just gonna need to, do you wanna put time limits on how long you can park in that particular spot, or how, what, what's your thought process, I guess?
Can you see what might be out there, kind of a standard?
Yeah, I can.
Yeah, just see what other towns are doing, I mean, yeah, you don't want somebody charging and leaving the car there all day, that's not polite, uh.
It takes all day to charge.
No, it shouldn't.
On the, the electric chargers, are we set to do, I know we're only doing one, but are we set to do two of them if we needed to do that?
That's not where we're going, too.
We're doing one, two, two locations, one in each spot.
But we are, I mean, we've got a pad set for that.
Yeah, it's all right here, it wires up, and it, actually, it's set to charge two cars at the time.
Right.
Yes, it's, we're a go, we're just waiting to get, uh, UMAC put the conduit in for us last week, and last Wednesday, I think it was, it's all there, we just gotta, uh, pull the wire, tie it all in, and then we do have to pour a pad for it to sit, so.
Question I've been asked a couple times for whatever reason, I don't know why, um, was about the, the charging, um, spaces. What kind of enforcement to keep people from randomly parking in those spaces absent? Well, I mean, if he, the charger, I mean, if the parking lot's full, they're gonna park in those spaces and block the chargers, whatever.
I would say it'd be just like, just like a handicap, I mean, if we catch them, then we could take them, but.
Well, you know, if you need the ordinance for that kind of thing, or?
Yeah.
Okay, let's create an ordinance.
I was already ordered, it's on the parking lot, I'm trying to just get it amended.
We're just trying to, do you wanna put time limits on how long you can park in that particular spot, or how, what, what's your thought process, I guess?
Can you see what might be out there, s- kind of a standard?
Yeah, I can.
Yeah, just see what other towns are doing, I mean, yeah, you don't want somebody charging and leaving the car there all day, that's not polite, uh.
It takes all day to charge.
No, it shouldn't.
So it's only one spot that allows them to park and charge?
There's two spots to charge.
There's two spots there, they're painted green, and I believe it says EV only or something.
I think it's up to two hours, I think the chargers were getting, uh.
I think two hours.
What's the hours on that lot, twelve to six or something, I mean, that you can't park?
It's close, I think it's close twelve to six.
Sounds right, that's, that's.
And one other thing about the parking lot, just so everybody knows, it is a public parking lot.
Yeah.
It's not anybody's private lot, anybody that come first, first come, first served can park in that parking lot, so. Just wanna make sure that that's out there, as far as I know, we're not gating it, we're not closing it, other than from midnight to six, but.
These are all questions.
Okay.
So hopefully we can put this to bed.
All right.
It's, it's just a public parking lot, so anybody can park in there.
The midnight to six, that'll just be on sign, right?
Yeah, it was, uh, it's, we can, you know, go back through the blocktop, drive it in, or if you wanna do something different.
Well, we can make it, yeah, we'll look at options, let's look at options before we just drive it down through there.
Yeah, 'cause we did have signs out before the project.
Yeah. Anything else, Dave?
Brandy, that sign right by the EV charging station for the.
That's what I know, I'm gonna ask Mike and Bruce if you guys had anything.
Yeah, I said real quick, the, uh, my small digester has an eight-inch pipe on a tiny degree swivel that I lower down to drain the super dam off of. A two-foot hole, chunk fell out of it, it's original, so I, I told Doug about it, I called Maddox, we're in the process of, uh, giving them a quote to, uh, convert it all to stainless steel, can we do that? It's a pretty crucial part of our sewage handling, so it's something we're gonna have to get on pretty quick.
Okay.
And we tried decant, we decanted the big digester this week, and the swivel on it's locked up too. We'd like to never got that thing real close to get it drained off, so once we get it drained in October, after they land a plant, I'll have somebody come take a look at it and pull it on that too.
Okay.
That's all I got.
Roy, do you got anything?
I'm sure.
Well, right, I ran into, Peerless was here last week, weren't they?
Yeah, they were, uh, testing wells, the high service folks.
Yeah, I talked to that guy, ran into him, uh, here in town, and, well, he had a, he had a Peerless truck with a boat in the back, so I had to ask. But anyway, he was telling me we got an issue out there with.
There were some issues, we couldn't go to report.
Yeah.
There's an issue with tins where part of the damp pipe is, for all the waters, part of the water's going back in.
Uh-huh.
I can use it in a emergency situation, you know, we'll end up breaking the shaft, so.
So you think you have to report by the next mon- meeting, two weeks? No?
No.
Okay. Well, it sounds like self.
There's an issue with a couple of other wells.
As soon as we get the report, we need to.
Probably need to clean.
Yeah.
Pump, the water's gonna pour the pump.
Okay, so something to look forward to.
Yeah.
All right.
You can call it, but yeah.
Uh-huh, okay.
Well, Brandy, you wanna?
Um, yeah, I just had something I wanted to touch briefly on, on South Market, but before that, um, I did wanna say that, um, I appreciate Alan Ador and the Rotary Group, um, about once a month, they send me an email of the lights, so several of those, um, members, they'll check out if we have streetlights or something out, and they've been flagging them, so it's been, it's been very easy for the electric department to change those out, and I explained to Alan, there's a couple of lights that we still have on order that he's asking me about, but I, I believe that the electric department has touched all of those lights. Just, streetlights, making sure they're all on forty-one Wacken, so if anybody, if anybody does see any of those, but I appreciate, um, Alan and that group of members letting me know. Um, South Market, uh, there was a progress report sent out, um, they've done some, you know, the erosion control, they've begun installing that eight-inch water line from the south end, which Doug just talked about extending. Um, they're gonna continue, uh, this week, working on that eight-inch line to Pennsylvania Street. They're gonna begin work on connections on a new eight-inch water between the south end of the project and Pennsylvania. Erosion control maintenance will come, be done as well. Just to make sure, I think I've touched on this a couple of different times before, they will not be working during Cover Bridge Festival. So, um, I do not know what they're gonna do about their signs, if anything, but there will not be any work being done through there, so the road will be passable, people will be able to come and go, so if they have any questions, they can call here and I'll do the best I can to find the answers for them.
Well, speaking of lights, are you done?
Yes.
Yeah, our polls for the lot, I've heard various, um, things, uh, do, do we, have, have they been ordered, or?
Yes.
Yes, they've been ordered.
Okay, so that's, okay, that's where we're at, um, well, until they get here, golly, um, what do we have exposed over there, we have our bolts.
Yeah, just the, the bolts and then some wires, I think, we'll, we can put cones or something on them.
You wanna put cones over them, or?
Something like that.
I don't know, there'll be all kinds of foot traffic, uh, well, trip pads are two, I guess, need to do something. Uh, and just so everybody knows, I'm attending on behalf of the town board, yay, uh, regional sewer meeting tomorrow is, uh, what is it, eleven to twelve, over here at the bomb shelter, the bunker, I call, um, what is that building called?
Annex.
Annex one, okay, Annex one, so I'll, I'll be there and, uh.
There is no Annex two.
Report. Eleven to twelve.
Eleven to twelve, sorry.
So, yeah, I'll update you on that.
What's the timeframe on that?
They don't have one yet.
So if somebody were perhaps needing help with the septic system, would it be who then to have hopes of this going through the next years?
Have hopes, it's, it'll be a two-phase project, uh, because it's such a large financial, financially, it's such a large project. B-Dale will probably be the second part of that project, based on, because of the park and the school and Marshall, that's the first. But it's a huge monster of a project, uh, some fellow from USDA is gonna be there tomorrow, USDA and, uh, who's the other state agency? Um, is it Ocre? Uh, I think it's, USDA and Ocre, but they have caps on how much they can fund projects with, per year, and, and.
I thought the feds were throwing a lot of money at this regional.
Well, they, they are, but hopefully they'll find the source of revenue, this project need to, you know, from a town point of view, we're just there because we do have capacity, you know, you're looking at a hundred and ten thousand average gallons per day, and we're rated one point one million, and, and, and we run seven hundred on dry. So we have capacity, and anything that has to be done to upgrade us would be paid for by this project, we would have no cost, except we would pick up new customers and help cover our fixed costs out over those customers, but, you know, right now, it's still very, very, you know, preliminary stuff, been going on there for, gosh, this, well, this is the second or third time they've attempted in the last two decades.
Yes.
It's a good project, it's needed.
It's very needed.
But, uh, it's a newsie of one to get figured out. Uh, other than that, I don't think there's any meetings there, are there, until our next board meeting? Well, Kevin, you know anything going on here?
Next week, we're gonna meet.
We've got a stormwater, storm, did we get any, did we get any bids, have we got any?
No, but usually they don't come in until that time.
Uh, so, yeah, next Wednesday night, week from this Wednesday, we, we have a storm bid open seven P M. about that Beetle Street.
The paper's not here, but the.
Uh, at ten, eleven, at seven P M., I'm sorry.
Our, um, next board meeting, council meeting, will be on Monday the sixteenth, even though that is our, um.
Clonma State.
Yes, thank you, um, Clonma State.
Whatever the other thing.
Indigenous people.
Um, so, I mean, the office will be closed, utility department, um, will not be working that day, but we will still hold our meeting at five P M.
Okay.
On the sixteenth, so, so there's no confusion on, that was not moved, so.
Okay.
I may or may not be here.
That's the first day of the festival?
First Monday, I won't be here.
First day of the festival is Friday the thirteenth.
Yeah.
Seems to have.
Well, you, you, I'm done.
Wrapped up, any, any comments from the?
I have a comment. I'd like to praise and compliment, uh, Chief McMichael and the police department for always maintaining such a high presence around the schools. I can't stand at the crosswalk for more than three or four minutes without one of our officers driving by, and I think that's probably the best use of the limited resources the department has, just wanted to throw that out there.
Well, thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Thanks, John. Thanks again. Anybody else?
I'm gonna feed off that, that I do appreciate the cages we have in their cars, 'cause on calls, we've utilized it, a lot of times on my shift, so.
You guys have cameras?
No, we do not, so. We had a shots fired the other day, so, you know, we put that guy in his cage.
Good idea.
We don't have one, so it's kinda nice to have, so.
Well, thanks again, Bill, so, Chris?
I'll make a motion to adjourn, second.
Call in favor?
Aye.